Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us online and as always, thanks for joining us in person. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, April 25th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. So as I said, good evening, everyone. My chairperson's report will be quick. I would like to take a moment to say thank you to Dr. Tranberg for his service over the last three-plus years in being here in the thick of COVID. And congratulations on an exciting new role as the next superintendent of Branford. So congratulations, Dr. Tranberg. Thank you for your time and energy. I watched your appointment and all I want to know is, is the chairman of the board up there, is he a sailor? Because he was quite into nautical terms as he appointed you. But it is a coastal town, as someone reminded. So congratulations. We wish you well. Great. The next round of applause, I think, should go to a young gentleman sitting at the end of the table, John Raskoff, and the incredible performance. And a round of applause to everyone who was part of Newsies. So I did go to the two o'clock matinee with my little one, who said she wanted to be in the play. I said, oh, you got to try out if you want to be in the play. So watch out next year if Reagan's still up at school there. But I will say Broadway quality. It was just phenomenal. It was a packed house. If I could have, I probably would have gone to see it again Saturday night. That's how much I thoroughly enjoyed it. The also, the also piece of it, which was my understanding, Julie can fill in where I missed here, but was it was the first time in a while that the orchestra pit was all student-led. And so the music, the scripting, the choreography, the dancing, the stage set. I mean incredibly professional and well-done. So the best comment, as I was leaving the theater, was from a member of the Board of Finance, who said, we really should fund and give the theater and the stage everything they want financially. So I put that on the record. But we'll continue to support and do all the good things we need to do up at the high school. But it's the second performance I've seen you and John, so I think someday we might see you down on Broadway, which would be very exciting. So but well done. Thank you. Good point, Jill. Thank you. Just a reminder also, how this works in terms of Dr. Tranberg. Dr. Tranberg will be with us through the end of the school year, and he will be starting in his new role July 1st up in Branford. And the search process will begin immediately. So thank you for that. Good. With that, Michelle, if we're ready, we'll move on to public comment.
Good evening. Anyone in person would like to participate?
Sure. Please come up to the podium.
Please state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes to comment.
You might want to bring the microphone down.
Oh.
Perfect. That's great. Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Alicia Johnson, 89 Raymond Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to me tonight. I'm here to address the board regarding school security here in the wake of yesterday's lethal school shooting in Nashville. I have two children at Tocanyke Elementary School, and I felt a sick pit in my stomach putting them on the school bus this morning. While the narrative around what happened in Nashville continues to unfold, ultimately, it is yet another nauseating instance of children being killed amongst their friends and teachers. For context, the pastor at the Presbyterian Church linked with the school in Nashville was just two years ago a pastor at the church in Dallas, Texas, where my father and grandparents were members. The pastor lost his daughter yesterday. So this one's hitting close to home for me in a couple of ways. The Nashville Police Department released a video of the killer entering the school. They used a semi-automatic gun to shoot through a locked class door and then walked into the school to begin firing upon children and adults. Seeing this footage on the news made my blood run cold because after the school massacre in Uvalde, Texas, less than a year ago, I was similarly anxious about my children at school. After putting them on the school bus the day after Uvalde, I couldn't stop myself from wondering what would happen if a person with a gun shot through the locked class doors at the front, side, or back of Tocanyke. Each of these access points are floor-to-ceiling glass. I come to speak tonight because I do not feel that hiring security officers is adequate to keep our children safe. As a town, we have publicly acknowledged the mental health crisis that has blossomed in our high school student population. And that does not take into account the public health crisis or mental health crisis of our adult residents, particularly post-COVID. We can also be sure that semi-automatic rifles are here in Darien. I myself have overheard neighbors discussing the various guns they own and keep at home, including semi-automatics. It's not a secret. I see all of this in order to propose a more thorough approach to school security. I can speak most to the school my children attend, though I've attended sports practices and games and other events at all of the schools in town. The truth is that these are all open campuses, where anyone can approach the school from pretty much any direction at will. I respectfully urge the board to consider the more effective and, of course, more expensive approach to protecting our children. That is, a rethink of our school campuses to better shield our children from a would-be shooter.
You're almost at time.
Bulletproof glass is a no-brainer, in my opinion. Additionally, I encourage the board to consider some sort of perimeter so that we can have eyes at access points who's coming onto campus. I love living in Darien. I love raising my children here. If a shooting tragedy were to happen at any one of our schools, like it did in our neighboring town of Newtown, Connecticut, I would never forgive myself if I didn't speak tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone online, Michelle?
If anyone unsung would like to participate in public comments, please use the raised hand icon. There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you, either remotely or in person. I'll be a wee bit repetitive, but I won't be. I won't repeat everything that the Board Chair had said, but just to. Chris and I have worked for many years both here and in other districts, and I wish him well, and I thank him for his leadership, particularly over COVID and curriculum and also supporting the professional learning of the staff. Thank you, Chris, and good luck. I'd also want to thank Mrs. Manuelson and the High School Administration for their organization of the Connecticut SAT Day last week. I was a huge undertaking. And students were taking that, our 11th graders, and they were doing that online, and that went well. Congrats again to Bravo, to the task. I like you. You speak to it. You did a phenomenal job. So thank you. The SSO, the information about the SSOs will go out tomorrow. It starts with a communication to the staff and the parents and also a press release. Next week, the dates for the PTO meetings or coffees at the various elementary schools. Board members are more than welcome to attend that and are encouraged to attend that. I think there was a sense you may want to attend some of those, but feel free to do so. And our Director of School Security, also our Director of Mental Health, will be there along with the actual SSOs in person. We have updated the website that's gone live for this school security. In there, we've put in information pertaining to Q and A's that we thought would be helpful to the community in terms of if they have specific questions about. If you have concerns about children, for instance, that come up at a board table here, who may be uncomfortable, or you've got any other questions about the school security officers and how they're being implemented, how they're being introduced to the students. It's all online, so we encourage people to look at that. But those will be, those communications will go out this week. You will have the meetings next week with the PTOs. They start on the 17th of April as the first day. They'll be onsite here early April during trainings and so on. So I have shared with the board the communication regarding those things, and all the communications are ready to go. Young composers, I think maybe Swahar or John will talk about that. Good luck to our high school robotics team this week in Hartford. And they'll be up there Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as part of the first robotics competition. The Darien Music Strings Festival is April 4th. And I think I said they're going to be, they're going to be collaborating with Mark Wood. And that is the International Recording Artist Electric Violinist, and that's going to be. I think you're going to end up in like a rock star, like a rock concert going on, so I look forward to that. I'm sure we know some of the songs along the way. Thank you to the juniors and seniors who participated in the STEM Day at the elementary schools today. Kicked off that experience and those are students who are part of the National Honor Society and are young scientists. We have the finance meeting for the recommended budget on March 30th, Thursday, Thursday evening, and the vote on the budget on April 6th. I believe the policy subcommittee will be rescheduled from this upcoming Friday. And believe it or not, we wish our families, because we won't see you before then, a safe and enjoyable spring recess.
Forgot that's coming up, spring recess, right? Wow. We'll move on. Thank you, Dr. Adley. The student representative reports. We'll start with Swah.
Actually.
Or start with John? Sure.
So as everyone has already mentioned, the play is over. We encourage everyone who was not able to go, because we did sell out. Please book tickets more in advance. We're going to be opening ticket sales earlier for all shows in the future. We're very grateful to everyone who was able to come. This was the largest cast we've had in a while. As people have mentioned, you know, all students, we're really proud of all the work we've done. We're already prepping for several award shows that we, you know, we're anticipating nominations because as our director said, that was the best thing that we've produced in his career as a director at the high school. So we're feeling very proud. The 308 agenda is not over yet. We still have several performances on a smaller scale into the end of the year. So please be on the lookout for those. The DHS Orchestra just got back from their trip to Washington DC, where they won silver in the string orchestra category at the 2023 Heritage Performance Festival. So they had a lot of fun there. The DHS Chorus is also going to Orlando in April, right, I believe, after April break for a competition in clinic, as well as several other different types of clinic events at Disney. Also, as Dr. Adley mentioned, the young composers concert is tomorrow. So that starts, I believe, at somewhere at 6:00 or 6:30. And it's all student composers who have, you know, written a piece and they're having a performance at the high school. So all the way from kindergarten through groups at the high school are performing that night. So we're excited.
Thank you, John.
Also Unified Sports attended their basketball tournament at Ludlow High School on Monday, and it was a great success. Our DECA team just competed at its annual state conference, and we had a lot of members place. So we had 17 first-place awards, six second-place awards, and 17 third-place awards. And a bunch of students going on to Nationals as well. And quarter three ends tomorrow, so grades will be closing soon, and student government elections are next week.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both. Uman to approval of minutes. May have a motion to approve the following minutes of the special meeting held on March 15th, 2023, and minutes of the regular meeting held on March 15th, 2023. May have a motion. Dave, second by Jill. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We'll move over to Board Committee Reports. John?
Last Thursday, the Finance Committee met, and we have a ritual. We're on the surface of the surplus that we're seeing through this fiscal year and also a number of transfers tied to the pre-purchases that the Board approved this part of the fiscal year 24 budget process. But then we went on to have a robust discussion about the future budget process. And basically, included in the Board Packet and the Finance Committee Packet was a memo that was dated March 21st, 2023. It was created by Jill, but it was basically from the Board of Education. It was notes that we took during our discussion at our last meeting and some of the things that we want to focus on. And it was a really productive discussion, even though we. Our meeting ran probably five times its normal length during it, but it was productive. So, you know, basically what we're trying to do here is enhance productivity, reduce redundancy, which, you know, Alan pointed out, there were two, Rich counted 240 questions logged in by not only this board, but its fellow stakeholders in elected government. So I think, you know, we're not trying to stifle any input or conversation, but we're trying to properly order and focus on each elected body's roles and responsibility in the process. So basically, what is important is we expedite these changes. So what the administration is going to provide at the next meeting is a quote-unquote revised budget calendar so that we can fit in some of the comments that we received thus far. You know, if we have policy discussions, how do we fit those into the master agenda? Present those earlier on the year, so then when we get to budget season, some of those policies are already in place. The priorities are in place for administration. So just one example, so at the next Finance Committee meeting, we'll run through that and hopefully have a formal presentation to the Board in terms of changes that the Finance Committee is recommending. I have sent out emails to both the Board of Finance Chair, as well as F and B and Education Chair in terms of what we're covering at the next meeting. And I think Sarah also provided the link to them so that they could review the meeting as well.
Thank you, John. It was a good document. I saw the video. It was a good conversation. So I think it's a great opportunity to just go back and do some lessons learned and look at efficiencies. So thank you.
And thanks for, Jill, for taking the notes at the last meeting for the.
Thank you, Jill. Any other Board Committee reports? Dennis?
Yeah.
Sarah?
I'm pointing towards me. The Curriculum Subcommittee met on March 16th. We talked about the science curriculum and the changes, particularly at the elementary level, to the music curriculum. There were some really neat videos and fun things shared by those department chairs. So I encourage everybody to go back and watch what we're doing, and there's some exciting work going on.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Any other Board Committee reports? Good. We move on to presentations and discussions. I will read this once, and then we have the motions to go through. We think we'll get a quick update. Our friends are here from KGND and ONG Industries. And Jill, anything you want to add? This is kind of, kind of part of the process. This has changed a little since we did Ox Ridge, but the state is now looking for approvals on some of the phases as we go through this process. So everything is on track. I will tell you that the HHR Committee, along with our partners at KGND and ONG, are just working incredibly hard. The time and energy that goes into these building committees from a volunteer standpoint is unbelievable. And again, a thank you and a shout out to all the town volunteers that participate and lend their experience and time. And also to Dr. Adley and the staff. It's in addition to the day job and also the principals at those elementary schools. The time and energy that goes into this is incredible, and thank you to our partners at ONG AP and KGND. So thank you. This will be an update on Henley Homes and Royal Building Project and possible action on three separate motions to approve the Phase Two bid documents as prepared for bidding dated 3/20/2023 and the professional cost estimate dated 3/20/23 for Henley Elementary School State Project Number 0350121EA to approve the Phase Two bid and documents as prepared for bidding dated 3/20/2023 and the professional cost estimate dated 3/20/23 for Holmes Elementary School State Project Number 0350122EA and to approve the Phase Two bid documents as prepared for bidding dated 3/20/23 and the professional cost estimate dated 3/20/23 for Royal Elementary School State Project Number 0350123EA. With that, I will turn it over to Eric. Lori? Laurel?
So I just, as I come up, I just want to, I want to thank Laurel for all her work regarding this matter, moving us forward, and also her work with the, she's been waiting for weeks and months now with the principals regarding phase. And congratulations to Eric. The recipient of New York's Architect of the Year in his company, so congratulations to you there. And they're here tonight just to give us a wee update and to give the information regarding the approval of, or sorry, the motions that you see.
Well, thank you, and thank you for having us. We've been, as you.
Just we pause, I think, interrupt the gel, sorry.
First, Chris Price couldn't be here any senseless. Apologies. But secondly, in order for the board to approve this, again, this is, you know, there's a lot of work going on that, you know, hundreds and hundreds of pages. So just to understand that what we want the board to walk out of tonight, understanding is that the scope is the same, where we are from a financial perspective and what the timing looks like, more or less. So and Alan has a memo on you, for you on some of the staging discussions, at least at a very high level from a milestone perspective. We'll talk through the finances, and then, you know, again, the scope is the same, but Eric will cue us up there.
Eric Kyer, KGD Architects, thanks for having us. I think the last time we were here was a couple of months ago. So yes, we've been hard at work the last couple of months. You don't see us necessarily on a day-to-day base, but I think, basis, but I think that the the Building Committee sees us often, as well as the administration. At this point, we've been for the past two months putting together construction drawings. Construction drawings are both for permit as well as for bid. The permit drawings went out, and we are finalizing the permit process with both the town and the state right now. And the bid process and the bid documents will be, we're currently preparing. We've been working with ONG. At this point, it's really sort of a coordination effort, making sure that all the details are on there, that drawings are coordinated between the different systems. So ultimately, when these documents go out to bid, they're as good as they can be. And our partners, ONG, is great at sort of reviewing these. And I know we've already had discussions this evening on a couple items that we are going to continue to work on. So the plan is to go out to bid later this next month. I think that Lauren will probably go through what that actual schedule is. But we're getting in good shape right now. It's great to see these renderings behind us. Anybody who was at the walk-through a couple, a week ago, actually had a first pass at these, but they're going to be terrific projects, and we're really thrilled to be a partner with you.
Eric, could you just provide a context of, has much changed or not much changed since the last time we were here?
No. The, at the end of design development stage, which is when we were here back in January, that really is 100% of the scope. The entire project has been determined at that point. And what the construction drawings are, are really putting together another layer of detail so that the builders and the people that are permitting the project understand the full scope, right down to the individual details. But the scope itself has had been established already. So there hasn't, haven't been any significant changes since we met with you last.
Okay. Good evening, Laurel Purcell with ONG AP. Nice to see you all again. Just so, in case anybody's wondering about Phase One, we're still bidding that. We haven't got the numbers yet. But anyhow, that's still out there. So this is just the next step. This is the Phase Two. This is the rest of the project. And I'm just going to talk quickly about the cost estimates. As Eric and his team has been developing the documents, we've been spot-checking the costs as we go. So now that the documents are sufficiently complete enough for us to finish our estimates, we do have a slide that represents where each of the schools ended up. One of them is slightly over, another one is a little bit over, but on Royal, we're under. So when you look at the totality of the whole, all three school projects budget-wise of the 81 million, I'm sorry, 82 million, we're about 81 million. So we're roughly a half a million under budget with the three schools. And so we need your approval to approve the bid documents as well as these estimates for the state. We do have two review meetings with the state tomorrow, one for Henley and one for Royal.
Thank you. Jill?
Do you want to clarify that there, we do have contingency and escalation dollars that remain? So if those numbers come in as they look, now, of course, that would be pretty amazing because these are, these are just cost estimates. So we've been, we were very happy with the degree of confidence we have in the numbers so far. We would still have the ability to go into contract because we have budgeted with contingency and escalation dollars at this stage.
Right. There's still contingency included and escalation until the bids come in. So that's still, that's still included in these numbers.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? John?
Could you just comment quickly on the Royal, you know, differences, where you found the largest difference?
As far as the being the under-budget?
Yeah.
I think it was just how the project budgets were set up, and I don't know if you want to chime in, but I think how the original budgets were set up, not necessarily the entire scope of work was clear. So it was Royal more.
So basically, when we started looking at this project a year ago, the Holmes project had the lowest budget and the Royal had the highest. And ultimately, when we, as a, as a group evaluated the educational specifications, it turned out that it was really critical to provide a little bit more money towards the Holmes project, and we had more than enough for the Royal. So if you can look at the bottom lines for each of those now, you can see that all three of those projects are within about a million and a half dollars of each other. When we started this process, it was, I don't remember what the number was, closer to $4 million separation between the lowest and the highest. So it was really looking at the educational specifications and making sure that we were providing the same classrooms and the same specifications across the board. And so that's why it's changed over time. But ultimately, we're looking at three projects that are very consistent in message and in program.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Jill, anything you want to comment on, on the staging memo?
Would you want to, Alan, you want to pass around and talk to us quickly?
Yes, actually. After those people are in the audience, we'll have to post this online. I'm supposed to pass my paper, so. Not my thing. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I give you the wrong one?
No, no, no.
I want to thank Laurel as I've been passed out because she is. Her and Kevin, our facilities tracker, have been spending a couple of months of really looking at the staging. So I'll cut the, cut the chase in this memorandum. You see the middle part there, that Henley, Homes, and Royal? There are meetings that are planned for the PTO and the staff. So Laurel and I will be present with the principals at each of those meetings, explaining the changes that are going to take place with this, for the staff and the students and for the PTO. Obviously, Laurel has been working with the principals and making sure that there's the least disruption possible. But there's, there are significant movement that's going to take place. Essentially, the construction of the new additions to the schools during the 23-24 school year to create swing space for students to move into, and the removal and relocation of existing portable classrooms. The classroom relocations within the buildings during 23-24, that's the next school year, to allow the renovation of spaces. And then the siteware activities will occur mainly during, during the respective summers, 23-24, and the final one, 25, for an opening in the fall of '25. It does mean that the field space is limited, and some of the indoor spaces are limited either for for the town summer schools or otherwise. So for instance, Henley, Darien Youth Commissions, that's the town summer camp. That was previously at Royals and Homes. Middlesex and YMCA will be moving there. That was previously at Henley. And the Tocanyke, there is no change at Tocanyke. We have been in communication, the Facilities Department, with the respective leaders of these organizations. And as of today, confirmed of the youth sports have been contacted as to alter arrangements that they're going to have to seek or accommodations that are going to have to be made, given the disruptions caused by the actual building projects. That's it. That's the long and the short of it. On the back, there's a detailed agenda of upcoming meetings. You can see it's very, very tight. But I want to thank, in his absence, he's not here, Kevin, for all the work he's doing and trying to move people around, and the principals and Laurel for sort of guiding that.
So I'll just reiterate, I think it was a little easier doing this at Ox Ridge, where we lost all use because of the tightness of that space up there. But working with our partners on that, architects, the architects and APO and APO and G, we got through it. So I will, I will say and ask kindly that the parents also, you know, communicate and be part of the conversation. There will be disruption. There's no doubt about it. You're renovating three schools on relatively small pieces of property. But this is the end game that a lot of hard work went into and a lot of feedback over the nine years that I've been on the board, that the portables must go. Classrooms need to be resized. The libraries need to be reimagined. And there's good renovation work around school bus queuing and other types of things. So there will be disruption. But I think based on what I saw and how the administration worked with our partners up at Ox Ridge, a lot of time and energy goes into this. And the principals and the administrative staff of each of those schools are very involved in the changes that occur, and they did a good job communicating out to the parents. So we'll continue with that methodology. But everyone kind of understands that it is a challenge. But we'll work through it because the end game is, as you can see, some incredible renovations to our. some incredible renovations to our local neighborhood schools. So thank you. We'll move forward with some motions. May have a motion to approve the phase two bid documents as prepared for bidding dated 3/2023 and the professional cost estimated dated 3/2023 for Henley Elementary School, state project number 0350121EA. May have a motion, Dennis, second by Jill. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. We have a motion to approve the phase two bid documents as prepared for bidding dated 3/2023 and the professional cost estimate dated 3/2023 for Homes Elementary School, state project number 0350122EA. May I have a motion, Dave Brown, second by Dennis Maroni. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. We have a motion to approve the phase two bid documents as prepared for bidding dated 3/2023 and the professional cost estimate dated 3/2023 for Royal Elementary School, state project number 0350123EA. May I have a motion, Dave Brown, second by Julie. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. And thank you both for coming this evening. And thank you for your time at the walk-throughs also. Thank you. We will move on to a topic that's probably on John's mind, right?
Yeah. It is.
Discussion and possible action on establishing 2023 Darien High School graduation date. Dr. Henley?
Historically, we've set the date on sort of the last meeting in April. Last year, we moved it forward a little bit, which makes sense. We're allowed to do that. And thus, we are, here we are tonight, just making a recommendation. The recommendation, with the one snow day, we go to Wednesday, the 14th, and the last teacher work day will be on the 15th. So the last student day will technically be on the 14th. That's typically and historically what graduate, where graduation has been. It's been set on the last school day for students. And that also tends to attract a greater number of our staff actually attending also, which is very helpful. So the recommendation before you have spoken to the high school principal is to keep it on the Wednesday, June 14th.
Comments, questions?
Just that's a half day for the rest of the school population, right, for everybody?
Thank you, Sarah. We have a motion to establish Wednesday, June 14th, for the Darien High School graduation. Dennis, second by Dave, all those in favor? That is unanimous. We'll move on to discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gift for athletic departments, the AEDs. Chris Manfredonia and Emily Merritt. Hey, Chris.
How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Good.
So we have a collaborative gift off here, something that we've, is a little unique. It's a collaboration between some of the youth groups in town, youth football, youth field hockey across Little League, as well as the Blue Wave Booster Club, to donate five AED machines to be utilized on the outside playing fields at Darien High School as well as the weatherproof cases that would be, that the AEDs be stored upon. We've run this by Dr. Kenefek. Emily, I think, is on the call with us as well as our athletic trainers. We've developed an AED management plan that has been signed off on all those parties as a way to safely and effectively manage those machines that will be in use for the fall as well as the spring seasons. The athletic trainers would be the ones responsible for the weekly checking of those machines outside. We do currently have two that are portable in the athletic department that are with each of our trainers that are used in the outside fall and spring season. So these will be permanently based on the outside for use for both the high school and youth groups alike. If you'll see from the packet there that we plan on posting one on the wall of the concession stand, one on the home varsity baseball dugout field, excuse me, one between the JV softball field and center oval field, another one between the center and upper oval field, and then one in the varsity softball dugout, again, for use by both high school folks as well as the youth groups. So it's really a collaboration between all these groups to have this gift here in front of you tonight. I will just note that four of the units that are being proposed tonight are new units. One, which was purchased by youth football back in August, was used this past season. That will be donated to us at the high school for our use and our care and custody of, you know, for both high school and youth group uses as well. The plan is to, although, change out the pads in that unit that was used last fall for youth football that's being donated to the high school.
Thank you, Chris. So just, so I understand it, you, you have two currently that are portable, that are used when those fields are in use. And we're actually going up to five that will be stationed around our athletic fields. Is that correct?
That is correct. So we, the athletic department has two that are go out with our athletic trainers during the afternoons and practices and games in the fall and the spring. And then this would be the additional five, which would be stationed outside permanently.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, Chris. Questions or comments? John?
Are they relocated, you know, during the offseason, Chris, to inside? And are they, you know, they have to be charged or, you know, just talk about the logistics? How are you going to manage them?
Right, so they don't need to be charged. Batteries need to be changed out every five years or so, which would be, you know, coming upon the board and the athletic department to budget for, as well as those pads. Those, those units that are being donated to store them in, while they are waterproof, they, below freezing, it suggests that they are brought inside. So we will manage that and bring those inside during the winter season, when the fields are not in use anyway, by either youth or high school seats, sports. But, and will be brought in, obviously, in the, you know, late fall or early spring, where we notice the, the temperatures dipping below freezing.
Good, good, thank you. Any other questions? Dennis?
Yeah, is there, is there training that the youth groups need to have to use these machines?
So anyone could use an AED machine. I could tell you the high school coaches are all trained in those CPR, first aid and AED usage. I would imagine that the youth groups are trained in those as well. I can tell for sure the high school coaching staff is.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, good evening, Emily and Chris. Can you just talk to, these are great, these are going to be on our fields, but can you just talk to where there are AEDs throughout our district?
Unless your family's on, if you heard the question, I can tell you that there is one certainly in the gym area of the high school that is managed and maintained by the nursing staff. I would imagine there's, there's in other buildings in the school district as well, though.
Yeah, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So, yep, so these are, the idea of these were after-school hours and outdoors. So, you know, club sports, weekend sports, things like that. If something was to happen, we want to make sure we have easy access to the AEDs and that's where these are going to be placed. Every one of the schools already have AEDs in the high school. We have five located on all the different levels. We have a map of where they are. And there's also, every school has a emergency medical response team that is trained on the AEDs and knows where the AEDs are. So these are sort of an addendum to more out-of-the-school hours. And it works really well with our current program. And we're going to be managing them similarly to how we manage the ones that we already have. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
There's one I say to superintendent's office, too.
Okay, good. There is two, there's two in the central office.
Yeah, just one quick question on Chris's point on the battery. So approving this also, that means we have to pay for the battery. So what does a battery cost on a machine for the, the machines we'll have?
Yeah, so our replacement battery runs about $1,000.
Okay, thank you.
You can bring that up.
You know, we, we recognize that, yeah, we recognize that these machines will only work if the machines are working, right? This program will only work. So we'll make sure that we are managing the batteries, making sure that they're all set, as well as the expiration dates on the pads and things like that, making sure if they're used, if they're replaced and everything. So that is coming under us, whereas we appreciate the donation of the machines from the community. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Emily. No further questions. I will first say thank you very much for this incredibly generous offer, offer and donation of almost $7,000. So a big thank you to the Darien Junior Football League, Blue Wave Booster Club, Darien Junior Field Hockey, Darien Youth Lacrosse Association and the Darien Little League. Thank you very much. We'll move to a motion to accept the gift from the following organizations. The AEDs from the Darien Junior Football League, Blue Wave Booster Club, Darien Junior Field Hockey, Darien Youth Lacrosse Association and Darien Little League. Motion, John Ceni, second by Dennis Maroni. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Emily, thank you, Chris. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
It's donation night, this is great. Agenda item, discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gift for the music department. Colleen?
Yeah, Colleen is here, yes.
Yes, I'm here. I don't have the ability to start my video. It says something about the host, okay.
You should be all set now.
Thank you, hello. So thank you, thank you for having me. I'm here to present on a donation from Darien Music for Youth. Darien Music for Youth is offering a donation of $5,000 to be used toward the purchase of an English horn for the, the district, but it will likely be played by students at Darien High School. The English horn is an instrument that is played by our top double read players, such as our oboe players. And it's the type of instrument that may not be available in all high schools. But in our high school, we should have one available because we have some really fantastic players. And the fact that we can offer this professional level experience to our wind players is a testament to the high quality instruction they are receiving in our program. So as you can see on the form, the instrument costs $6,090 and the remaining balance will be paid for with music department funds.
Thank you, Colleen. Questions or comments from the board? Great. First, again, a big thank you, incredible donation from the Darien Music for Youth group. So thank you so much. May have a motion to accept this gift from the Darien Music for Youth, the English horn. Julie, second by Dennis, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Correct. We'll move on to discussion on possible acceptance of contemplated art gift for Darien High School. Principal Dunn, hello, Principal Dunn, how are you this evening?
Hello, fine, thank you. Thank you for having me. I, I believe Jacqueline is on the Zoom, I saw her name there somewhere. We are very touched by the gift that we're presenting tonight on behalf of Katie Southworth, who is a graduate of Darien High School from 2012. And she is a contemporary abstract artist. Katie studied studio art and psychology at Colby College and pursued later a master's degree in education at Tufts. Katie shares on her website that her work harnesses the power of color and verticality, which was a new word for me, verticality. And she does so to promote mindfulness, joy and well-being. In 2015, Katie's mother, Ellie, died by suicide in our community. Ellie was a beloved gymnastic coach at Darien High School and also within the Darien community. And Katie describes that the higher purpose of her work to foster a brighter, mentally healthy future for all is a dedication to her mother. So Katie has reached out to us as a result of the losses that we've experienced and is wanting to be a part of our community, return to our community and share the beautiful art that she is creating. She will be with us at DHS on April 20th to work with our art students. And together, they will be creating a piece that she will then donate to Darien High School. This gift will be a celebration of her work with our students and a symbol of the hope and joy her work embodies. So we are very, very grateful to Katie for reaching out to us, to support us and our school community and hope that this is a relationship that will continue long into the future. You see that her work is, is highly valued. And so we are recognizing it as a donation to the school. And it will be placed in a prominent position at the high school. This work that will be a combination of the work that our students do with her and the work that she shares with them. I should share, and this will, is a tribute to our, our art teachers in our, our district, that when I met with her most recently over Zoom, she shared a deep appreciation for all that the Darien Public Schools did for her and especially her art teachers, pivotal to the pathway that she followed. So we ask for your approval to accept this generous gift from Katie, not just of her art, but of her spirit and generosity to our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Dunn, very well said, thank you so much. And a big thank you out to Katie Southworth and her extended Southworth family. Thank you so much. Questions, comments? Thank you. May have a motion to accept this art gift for the Darien High School from Katie Southworth. Jill, second by John Ceni, all those in favor? Thank you. Principal Dunn, please also extend the boards' thank you to Katie Southworth.
Of course, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
We'll move on to discussion on February 2022, 2023 financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers.
So this is the financial report through February. We are forecasting positive balance of $727,189. The general education RCs forecast a positive $165,000, while the special education RCs forecast a positive $561,000, with the bulk of that being excess cost related reimbursement. The positive variance in salaries totals $306,000. We have small savings and turnover of $53,000. We do carry savings of over $60,000 for the new custodial maintenance contract. We have some savings in interns, delayed start in the SSOs and director of mental health, some savings in clubs and councils, as well as elementary intermurals. In operating, we do have a negative variance. It is largely due to the pre-purchases that are before the board for transfer for $176,480. We do have some small savings in the audit that came in on the budget, as well as the adult ed cooperative with Stanford Public Schools. Fixed is a positive $110,000. The bulk of this is related to health insurance. And again, that's largely due to those under-enrolled elementary sections that we talked about beginning of the year.
Which page?
I should say, fixed. There you go. So fixed is a negative $72,000. That is largely, again, due to the pre-purchases that are before the board today. Revenue is a positive $727,000. And again, that is largely due to excess costs, which is projected at $592,000 above budget. We did mention at finance committee, we were able to submit two additional claims for student and students in the March 1st filing. So this does represent a slight increase in the amount of revenue that we were expecting from the previous report. So we did mention earlier, we do have nine transfers for the board of Ed's consideration and approval. All nine relate to the pre-purchases that were approved in the budget process for next year. The first is for $40,988, which is the pre-purchase of uniforms. We are recommending taking the funds from the delayed start of the SSOs. $14,050 for the pre-purchase maintenance equipment. And we are recommending taking those savings from the groundskeeper's new salary schedule. $6,430 for the pre-purchase of music equipment and taking the funds from the delayed start of the assistant director of facilities. $6,600 for the pre-purchase of pottery wheels and the money coming from the new salary schedules for the groundskeepers and maintenance. The next slide, computer equipment, $39,600 for the pre-purchase of Chromebooks, taking those funds from the new salary schedule for the maintenance department, delayed start for the assistant director of facilities and eternity leave savings for an assistant principal. $2,000 for a pre-purchase of an AED for Ox Ridge, with the funds coming from a delayed start from a technician in the IT department. $133,492 for the pre-purchase textbooks and the funds coming from a delayed start for the director of mental health, delayed start for the middle school assistant principal, the China exchange program not running, and again, a new salary schedule for the custodians and intermurals. The next slide. The next slide. $2,068 for the pre-purchase of a welding machine, and that is savings coming from elementary intermurals not running. And then $3,960 for the pre-purchase of a Delta saw, and those are also coming from delayed starts from the director of nursing, delayed starts from the SSO and director of nursing and the assistant director for facilities.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. Questions or comments from the board?
John? One question I forgot to ask at our meeting, Rich, was the March 1, the ECR, March 1st claim filing for the two additional students. Will that carry over till the next fiscal year?
So as long as the students stay and then the services are the same, it would carry on.
So that would be like a new budget item that?
It could potentially be new. Potentially be new budgeted revenue.
If you knew about it earlier, would you have budgeted for it or?
We might have, yes.
So I guess when we go to the Board of Finance, maybe just kind of highlight that one development that's might impact the fiscal year 24 budget.
But could the flip side be out that there could be students that are not included?
So we?
It could be a wash.
So we do include any student that we know, whether or not they're receiving services yet here or not. And then we take an estimate of what those services are, what those costs are going to be. Then we also take out the students we know either are graduating or have modified us.
Okay. So it still looks like it could be plus two, even with going through all of that. Okay, thank you.
Just give a mention there in terms of dollar amount. And then we also discussed if there was any other items that we could accelerate or pre-purchase, and it didn't really, you know, without bending kind of the future budget curves. But the one thing that was mentioned was the Suburbans, potentially.
So those are capital items. I mean, either the Suburbans, which obviously it's been easier to get vehicles than it has been in the past, but still not quite as easy as it used to be pre-COVID. Those are items that could be pre-purchased, and then anything related to the auditorium, because those are actually items that are their capital items, they're one-off items, they're not reoccurring expenses.
So in future months, could you come back to us with some recommendations on that front?
So would it help you to get something in place to move quicker on the purchase of the vehicles?
It definitely would.
Okay.
But given that they're capital and wouldn't use operating.
So those are typically capital. The Board of Finance could choose to use the Board of Finance Capital Reserve if they wished. And so they did do that in a previous budget where they funded that out of the Board of Finance Capital Reserve and then took it out of the budget appropriation for that year.
And do you need anything sooner than later to purchase the stuff that was agreed to for that auditorium?
The sooner we have money, the sooner we can obviously issue a purchase order. But right now, we're in the process of drafting the RFP, which will go out. So the idea is to issue the RFP in April, kind of get results kind of towards the end of May. And then obviously, if it makes it through the approval process for the Board of Finance and then the RTM, we can't award until that actually happens. So if it ends up not getting approved, then the art, you know, the bitch goes nowhere and we don't award anything. If it ends up getting approved, then we have the opportunity to.
Good. Any other questions or thoughts? Good. May I have a motion to approve the proposed February budget transfers? Dennis Maroni, second by Julie. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Thanks, John. We will move back to, do we want any further discussion this evening on items surrounding the fiscal 24 budget process, the work that was done in the memo? Any further discussion around that?
This is actually not the work that was done in the memo. The finance committee is going to take that back. This is the items that were identified during the budget process that we said we wanted to talk about later in the year.
Some policy dis- So what came up was, you know, if there were outstanding policy issues that any board member wanted to kind of put on a list for future discussion, we would just highlight those items. So at our meeting, busing for sports was one. Again, my understanding, the board had to sign off. We really wanted to address that, but it was the opportunity for any member to kind of raise their hands, say, hey, I'd like the opportunity to please discuss these items in a future meeting ahead of the budget process.
Julie?
I would love a chance to discuss how we support clubs and councils, our policy regarding that.
You mean that how we fund them?
Yes.
I-
Our Board of Ed budget.
How we funded robotics and clubs and councils of a similar nature.
Right. The DECA is the Model UN, the clubs and councils that have expenses that have to be covered for them to function and operate that aren't presently covered. And I also, to John's example, I do think that the discussion of busing and athletic participation, what we participate in, how, where, what's, how that's decided. I think that would be a valuable discussion as well.
What do you mean by the last part? What we participate in, how, where, why?
Anecdotally, you hear stories of teams that travel to a tournament in New Jersey because it's a good developmental experience and we pay to transport these teams there as an example. And so if any policies around that that need a look or discussion.
John?
During the budget process, we talked about enhancing some revenue opportunities, whether or not be participation fees or, you know, I don't know how deep we want to take this discussion, but I would like to start with just participation fees and, you know, some costs sharing.
Great. I sent a email around to the board, too. There's been a request. Over the years that I've been on the board, there's been several requests. There's a current one that was bumped up to me. I think it would be good to look at the policy around naming rights of stadiums, fields, that type of stuff. I think we should have a clear policy on it and a set of guidelines that would guide us if something like that was proposed to us from the community. I know in my Tom on the board, there was a lot of discussion and it led to a lot of, my word, angst around plaques. I think we got through it, but if there's any clarity we can give to that, I personally don't have any issue with plaques. There's plenty of red brick walls around the district to put plaques on and show appreciation for what people have done in terms of donating time and money. And then the only other thing I would put on the table, too, is to John's point of revenue. I think we should look at scoreboards and advertising, like some other districts do to offset, whether it's security costs, whether it's transportation costs. But I think there's an opportunity, and it can be specific to local Darian businesses or not. I think there are some districts throughout, up the line or throughout the state that do that type of stuff that we might be able to get some information on. But I think it's worthwhile looking at because it comes up repeatedly. Jill?
Other things I had in my notes where we've already talked about this, mental health, which included the Wellness Center and MMS Kids in Crisis. So we're expecting Dr. Bad to come back. We're just putting it on the table here. Dave, I had department chairs. Okay. What I have written is metrics for success and the possibility of them teaching. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. And I think we'd also have to look at contractual terms as part of the second bullet there.
I had a Genius Hour overview. I think we talked about that here, but.
I think we're going to have, wait, you know, give it a year and then bring it back and see how it functioned. An update.
I know we have phase two.
I'm sorry, go ahead. With the Genius Hour review, will there be some sort of survey, you know, students, parents, if they're happy with the program, not just?
Looking for metrics, satisfaction. Over. Metrics and satisfactions, I captured it.
Yeah, thank you.
I had in my notes textbook versus technology overview. Is that something we're still interested in? Understanding how we're using textbooks versus how we're using technology and how that impacts us, not curricularly in the sense of every class, but sort of our role philosophy and then financially. Is that, is that too crazy? Is that too abstract a bullet? Would we need to be more specific?
That's okay. I think I understand that.
I think-
Is the list done yet?
I think part of it is the tie-in to the technology and the curriculum and the delivery in the classroom, the use of the technology. I think we hear from various people, including students, what's used and what's not used, but how it's tied into curriculum.
And Jill, just to briefly follow up, I think there's also a discussion of what tools we can give to teachers themselves to allow them to gather feedback, analyze test scores, things like that, and maximize their time facing students versus sitting grading homework.
Mr. Brant, sorry, I didn't catch that.
Instead of teachers spending time with a red pen, going through some homework, what we could do to automate some of those processes to allow them to have greater insight into what's going on without having to perform that work themselves. So I would throw out one item I've seen in the past, I'm not recommending this or not recommending, it's called Grade Scope. Be very much, you just drop the papers in, it goes through, corrects them, comes back with results.
I'm going to push back on that. That doesn't, I don't want a robot teaching my kids.
Maybe for the moment, for the, for the, we could say, taking a look at whether or not there are tools that the district uses or thinking of using.
Oh, correct. I'm not recommending a certain one. I thought I said that, to be clear. And I think, I wouldn't say we should get rid of the Scantron at this point either. So it's just another tool for collating information.
Are we, Dr. Adley, Rich, are we keeping on the list? You're going to continue to look at the replacement of Aspen? Is that a project? Okay, good.
I had the elementary school AP review, given that, you know, SENS ended up being a lot of the work that they're doing, whether or not that falls in our December update or at a separate time, but I had that on the list. I have phase two of the auditorium. I don't know when that falls. That's all. And then I had something about Unified Sports. I don't know if it comes to the level of.
I wonder if I could follow under the clubs and councils and how we support that.
Thank you.
Good. Dan?
Sorry, can I jump back a second? Sorry, you just triggered an idea in my head. The, it's an interesting point. I'd love to spend some time on that as we look at the technology because why would not suggest any student in this district is doing their work on, say, ChatGPT and submitting that? We may have to perhaps consider our tools to measure what's being submitted to make sure we're have monitoring there. So I don't want robots teaching either, but let's be honest, some of the tools have changed. And so we need to make sure we're evaluating that.
John?
On that subject. It is my belief that there are students who are utilizing this technology and to a certain degrees of success. While it does not, just for the board's knowledge, while it does not produce results that are, you know, A-plus level with minimal editing, it will. So just, just for your own recognition, and teachers, you know, in talking with them, have found ways to, for example, find out whether works have been created by ChatGPT. They can ask it, for example, did you write this? And with, you know, levels of confidence, it can say, yes, in fact, I did. And then, you know, upon, because, yeah, and then upon cross-checking records, yeah. So for example, my physics teacher did that and had, I think, 95% accuracy with which of the students did that. So it might also be a good, a good test for it. There's a new graduation requirement this year, which is writing some short essays about, you know, your time at DHS and, you know, according to the vision of the graduate. And so that might be an interesting time to test the capacity of ChatGPT. As much as I hate to say that, I do think that that is what many students plan to do. So I would just ask the board to consider rather quickly, I don't know, some, 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 something. Just because it will be a problem.
Good. Thank you, John. Dave?
I would just say that reinforces Jill's earlier scoping of what we're looking at here, the interplay of technology.
Eddie?
I would like to see a robust review of our literacy and reading curriculum as well.
Thank you. John?
So it's a long list. Some of it fits in those things we already discussed, but, you know, I think as a board, we should also prioritize some of this for administration. You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, throughout this. Maybe it's not just a one-year list.
Yeah, we can look at and do some prioritization. Yep. So I'll go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, I agree with you and I recognize it's very long list, but I'm appreciative of having this conversation because I feel like this isn't something that we do that often. And I think it's great to just give everyone a chance to reiterate or recapture some of the things that have come up so that we don't distract them. So, thank you.
I think it's a good thing for us to do at the end of the budget cycle, but I think one thing we can work on as a board is remembering that the master agenda conversations that do happen every so often, that's a good time to, you know, throw things out when you want them. Because they usually, they get two reads, a first with a preliminary and then a second that we vote on. We can be more responsive there, too.
I will, I will throw it out there because I don't necessarily want it coming up piecemeal, having been part of it for a couple of sessions here. But I think as a board, it comes up mostly through the budget cycle and then sometimes through donations. But I think as a board, we have to come to some type of conclusion of what we want to do around athletics and equity.
Oh, I thought we already had that.
Yeah, that's on the list, yeah.
What's that?
I thought that was already on the list.
Well, no.
Bussing was.
It was more, she was specific around busing and sports, but everything from uniforms to to the spreadsheets that, I mean, we've come a long way in terms of a view into it in terms of the spreadsheets that the administration and Chris Manfredoni have put together. Personally, I'm not sure it ever can be 100% equitable, but we can't have this constant conversation around it. And having been part of it a couple of times and done the work, the administration really done the work, and the board had conversations, made some tweaks and made some agreements. My thought process through the whole thing is if it's something that we really want to do a deep dive on and look at, what does it cost to move it all onto the budget? What does it cost to go down the path of a participation fee, whether it's sports, whether it's theater, whether it's stuff like that? I seriously, and, and Dr. Adley, you may, you may know better, but I think it's bigger than administration and board work, and it almost needs to be done from a consultant standpoint and someone to come in and look at it. And they would have to understand what we're trying to get to and what we want to look at. But I think it's something I throw out there to think about. We can circle back at the board retreat or at another meeting.
Yeah, I think, kind of to your point of having been in a couple of conversations, I think if we do want to have an athletics discussion, forgive me for the air quotes, if we do want to have an athletics discussion, I think we have to be specific because we have said, I think that's what you're saying. I'm just wanting to back you up. We've had general athletic discussions a couple of times and then not much changes. So if there's something we're looking at, you know, for example, parent participation fees, if we want to take a look at that, then I think that we as a board need to identify specifically what we're looking at.
Needs to be an all comprehensive. It's like, look, I think good work was done. We got to a good place with the Y. You know, that's a component of it, but I think if we're want, if we're going to tackle uniforms, if we're going to tackle who pays $1,800 for ice tan versus who pays $400 for swim time? I mean, we've got a, and I'm, personally, I'm not sure you ever get it to an even place, but.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tara.
So I agree. I've been saying it quite a few times, and you're right. There's, there's no way we're ever going to get to equity.
Right.
But transparency would be nice. I think that is our biggest issue here.
What do you mean by transparency?
Well, during the budget process, we keep getting different people from different sports, parents, whatsoever, you know, but we pay for this and we pay for that. And then it doesn't, when you ask the questions, you don't see it in the budget. Or it says that the district pays for this, but then you hear from parents that, no, no, we're paying for that. It's all very unclear. It's very muddy. It's not that I'm trying to get to a place where it's, we give X amount of dollars to each sport in that I just think we should know what we're paying for, and I think parents should know ahead of time going in what they're paying for, what we're paying for. And there needs to be some sort of fairness, such as buses, right? Maybe it's just within Fairfield County, maybe CX, FCX, but, you know, within that program, but not out to, you know, Massachusetts or some Boondock. But you know what I mean.
So we're getting in the warm-up.
Yeah. I just see. We set a pun?
Go ahead, Sarah.
I see it in buckets. I see it in, I almost feel like we need a forensic audit of the transportation policies, of the cut no putt policies of what parents pay. I think we just need, and maybe this is getting captains' parents from every sport, you know, getting what they pay, what they, what they've been told. I just think it involves a lot more people than. I just think it involves a lot more people than this table. So I think we need to include.
Good. All right, Dave, real quick.
Quickly, I'd like to respond to the audit comment because I think as we saw recently that we saw a budget for a squash team. We maybe have four squash teams. I'm very curious, Rich, as to what goes on, not from your oversight, but what happens in the day to day flow of documents and invoicing and other things and how this actually works out. So any insight you could provide as part of that process, we'd be very interested to see.
What's that?
Now or?
No. I will, I will, I will bring something up that I don't know why it keeps popping into my head. But there was a young gentleman that came here probably two months ago and spoke very eloquently about bike racks. And I want to know if anything's been done for that young gentleman.
The high school administration is counting how many bike racks they'd wish to have and where they would be. And then at that point, we bring something forward as a trend.
I would like to see that sooner than later. That gentleman took time and energy, came here. It's not that big a deal to buy a couple of bike racks or position bike racks. So again, if it's, you know, that, that should not be a heavy lift. So, good. Yeah.
So I just, and all honestly, I just want one of the context of this of like, we, we attached the master agenda to just your general thoughts of how you want me to approach this in administration. Like I said, is it to slip it into the master agenda or how? I mean, that's just, that's an honest question of mine, because there's a lot of items here, some bigger and others, but how, what's the best way you want to skin this thing?
I think you're going to have to look at the items. So if you look at naming rights policy, that could go to the policy committee, for example, first. If you, we already know mental health is coming in. The genius hour overview might end up going to curriculum first, for example.
Okay, all right, okay.
It's a good point.
And then officers can give you guidance and help prioritize things. Again, it's a long list.
Well, I think some of it, it's not a one. Yeah, and some of it may move to retreat work and, you know, where we can get stuff done, which we've been doing your job of at retreat, so good. Go ahead, Tara, you good?
Never mind, never mind. It's just a snarky comment.
Marge. Marge, real quick on the PR report, I see a couple of retirement, science, science, math, special ed, special ed.
So we have the two thousand dollar notification incentive that we sent to the teachers in February to try to get them to tell us earlier rather than later. None of these are real surprises, but we're sad to see them all go.
Appreciate that. Okay, good. And your recruiting efforts continue in earnest?
We went to the UConn job there today and it was very sparsely attended.
All right, thank you. We will go back to public comment. Michelle?
Anyone in person would like to comment? If anyone on Zoom would like to comment during public comment, please use the raised hand icon. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, does the board wish to go back into executive session for further discussion?
The question should be will.
Yeah, discussion proposed executive session for the employment of public employees pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one two hundred six act. We have a motion, John, second. Dennis Hall is in favor. Good, thank you. We'll move back into executive session.